Rice. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and the approval of the minutes from the two thousand, November twenty-six, two thousand eighteen meeting?
Motion to approve and suspend reading.
Yeah, but a motion by Wolf.
Second.
And second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Carey, thank you. Approval of the agenda, any changes, additions, corrections? If there are not, a motion gets approved. A motion by Pillar. Second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor of the approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Five A. MDU agreement. Okay, everybody have a copy of the? Room from MDU, any, do we have any comments or questions? Pat, did you look at that at all, see anything on there?
I, I, I just checked with Monty to see if they actually included the amended agreement. They said there was no amended agreement, all they said was this. Right on that, but in his letter he says the amended agreement is provided with a self addressed envelope, so I didn't, I didn't agree.
The amendment is from the original agreement from, I don't know how many, from three years ago.
Oh, the amended is just alluding to the fact with the new LED technology, the rates are changing and they're dropping and all that kind of stuff, so that's the amended. So what you have there is, that is the amended. The new, the new rates.
The latter, the new rates, yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I assume it does, it must be within the franchise limitations, so it's about, I don't have a problem.
Well, the result, the results are.
I don't have a reduced reduction.
Reduced cost.
Good thing.
Yeah, initially it's like, we would say five thousand dollars a month for that was on. Cause we don't have to pay five thousand dollars a month, right?
Oh, it's good.
I tried to convince him that was correct, but wasn't buying.
Now, I know there, there had been some discussions about possible options for Permain Street, but that's kind of disappeared off the.
That'd be over and above this, what they, what they have here now, it's what they provide, and if you want better than that.
We just come up with a side agreement or something.
Be our own, be our own, and they'd have to approve the specs and make sure that this will handle all of our overhead and everything else, so, yeah.
So I would make, I would make a motion to accept their, their new offering that results in a five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollar annual reduction in energy cost to the city.
Okay.
Estimated, not guaranteed.
I will second.
Motion by Pillar, second by Wolf. Discussion? Discussion.
And this like all the rights in town?
You're thinking about their response.
MDU, MDU is right.
So was there, was there like different type of, I guess, polls that were on a different? Different, I guess, like rental, like rate?
Yeah, there was some of the, actually, some of the rental rates went up. And a portion of them went down, but the biggest savings is just going to be in the electricity itself. Most, most of those are just going to be head changes on. Yeah. On existing poles. Yeah, if we, any pole changes would be at our discretion and at our expense, so they're not going to change any poles as part of the project.
Did, did they explain why if the kilowatt hours are dropping by sixty-seven percent, the price is only dropping by sixteen percent?
Cause of rent, it's a different rental for the poles, there's different rental rates for poles, poles with overhead lines, yeah.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion, Carey. Is Buster gonna be here?
No, he's not.
Okay. Shannon, that's right. So, okay. No request of citizens. Nothing other than seven. Eight A. Renaissance Zone Term Extension.
Yeah.
Who wants to, coming up or?
I don't have much to say. Um, he just wanted me to present it because this is the final step for it to be approved. The school, the county, everybody's agreed to it. We had the meeting the other night, open, public meeting, and there wasn't anybody to say they didn't want it, so it's, everybody seemed really, they're willing to do the extra five years. So it's just up to you guys to decide if you're gonna allow it, the whole trip. It's a good program, raising the value of the properties in town.
Shannon, give us the, the figure real quick on what the, what, do you have that, that we had the other day at that meeting?
We did buy.
Okay, right.
Yeah, it's like, what are you thinking, what, how much?
The tax, tax evaluation was so far over million, one point seven million was what it was, or?
Around one point five.
One point five, yeah, tax revaluation, yeah, of all the.
Yeah, and it's been, yeah, fifteen years so far.
Yeah. Okay, so we would need a motion if we want to continue this project, motion to move forward, if not, and discuss issues. Well, I was the only one there, I was, I spoke in favor of it, but it's kind of weird sitting over there.
And you looked kind of funny sitting.
By myself, yeah.
I will make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Wolf to approve the Renaissance Zone Term Extension.
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Casey.
You know, I think it's a great program, you know, I mean, in the past, I think it's been abused here, so I don't think it's for, you know, I mean, someone wants to build a, rent their home, you know, and they get, get, get us five years tax free, and then on people that are, that are, I mean, a block away, they don't get anything, you know. Unless we got a business in town, you know, I mean, after this, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, when the five years is up, and they change their name, they leave.
And it's not five years tax free either, it's, it's, it's a graded scale, so the first, the first year is free, right?
It depends on what the board approves as far as the Renaissance, so.
In the past, you have the full, the full, the full.
Full five years of?
The full five years.
And isn't it only tax free on the improvement that you made, it's not like total?
Right.
Like if you use it.
Yep.
If a business uses it and did a, a, a revalue of their place, and they added sixty thousand dollars of value, they didn't have to pay tax on that sixty thousand dollar value.
No, we, we just have to remember that the program's all positive, that's, that's rejuvenating certain sections of town that are recognized within this Renaissance Zone. So anybody, if there's a lot for sale, has opportunity to buy a lot there and take advantage of the program that's available to that, that particular location. And if it happens to be building a house versus a business, it's part of that Renaissance Zone.
And if they improve the value of the property.
Yeah.
Then our, a bit more taxable taxes, that's kind of where, where our benefit is, that we'll get more tax on the offer.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure it is tough if you're one block a, off of the Renaissance, and you see them getting a tax break and you're not getting one. It, it, yeah, and I'm sure it is tough, but it's.
But it's like anything in life, there's, there's a line somewhere.
Yeah.
No discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion, Carey. Thank you. All right, let's go down to reports. Water, sewer? Okay. Jason and Dave are not here. But you know?
We, we do want to bring up that erosion issue.
So in your packets, you have photos of the, the bridge north of Soro and the erosion, what corner is this, do you know?
This is on the southwest corner.
This is southwest, yes.
Basically, the apron's leading up to the bridge, it's not under the bridge itself.
So this was inspected by the state in fifteen?
Two thousand fifteen.
But not deemed?
There was.
Wasn't, probably wasn't much erosion?
No.
And as far as.
This is, this is zooming in on that gap that was seen on the first picture.
Right on.
Okay, good.
And Tim said that.
I couldn't figure it out.
Put a tape measure in there, oh, they couldn't tell, but we're back.
They were in twenty-two feet and hadn't run into anything.
Well, if that thing didn't break the summer without that asphalt traffic, I think we'd be pretty damn lucky. So the recommendation is to put some fill underneath there, some drainable fill, does that mean gravel?
Actually, they're talking about pumping the flowable fill in, uh, from Josh Reiner, more engineering. Potential ways to address this issue would be to use a flowable fill or removal of the concrete and placing base material and then patching the concrete back in. The flowable fill will be most economical, but will only be a patch. Eventually, there will have to be more extensive work done to remove those sections, redo the base, make sure everything's good, pack it decent, and then put concrete back in. And pin it back to the bridge deck.
So when he, he says it's just a patch, it's gonna solidify under there, but then it's just gonna erode below what, what they put in there?
Possibility, it could be a couple of years before you would have to do anything, but.
What, what have they suggested caused the erosion twenty-two feet underneath of that slab there?
That they didn't have any real suggestion as to why that was going so far, except that it does drain from both sides. When water goes over the slab, it does drain both directions, so if it is getting under, it might be just enough slope that it keeps going farther away, or enough slope that it keeps taking more out.
It's just bizarre.
Pride contracting did give us an estimate for the flowable fill, it estimated it would take three trucks of flowable fill to do both the north and the south side, because there is some erosion under the north side as well.
So when we say a flowable fill, it's just mud?
It's, it's got some concrete to it, so it will set up and hold that in place, so it doesn't fall. I know the engineer had said, well, it'll only fall, and you'll have about an eight inch difference in height there, so it won't really do any damage, but if you're the one that hits the, the first with your little car, it will do some damage if it falls.
Can we put spray foam in there? Is there a new spray foam product, or what's that product that?
You can go watch him commercials and see.
It's, it's, it's like a quick crete, and you, it expands with, with, have you seen that at all? Looks really cool product. Six thousand dollars would make a lot of money for that, for, for, for a Band-Aid.
But you said not to exceed six thousand, and more, more in line of a couple thousand?
Yeah, right.
So, so why would you, why would you give us a not to exceed three thousand?
Once he cuts the eighteen inch squares out, and you see something different, it may, the flowable fill may not address it.
So he's gonna do flowable fill from on top?
Yes. They'll cut four squares out, two on the north side, two on the south side, about a foot to eighteen inches square, and then put the flowable fill in and just fill it up with that to the top. Then eventually, that will all have to be replaced when the concrete approaches or address.
This image right here, where the concrete meets on the left side, it's a little deceiving, that is a curb, so it's quite a bit higher, and that's where water, so you drive where there's a puddle there all the time, but it's, and then that's sure, you know, that needs to have a better drain in there to go down the hill, and if that's the case, we need a little valley gutter going down the hill or concrete.
Probably have to river it up at some.
And are, and are we going to, if we approve the cost of this, are we going to pursue with the, with the county?
Yeah.
Like joint, joint venture in terms of paying for it?
I, I think we need to.
Yeah.
And we don't, I think we don't do it until we go to the county first, right? We do it, it's already done.
Okay, Tim was hoping to start tomorrow, while the weather's nice.
But I guess as far as the county paying for it, it's when we, we did the road, and the county did help us pay for everything, so.
Yeah, as far as I know, that's all ours within city limits, is the road. The road and bridge for that matter, and that's why they suggested getting it re-inspected as quickly as possible to see what federal funding would be available to fix it currently.
So what we would be approving today would just be a city expense for a gap fix?
Yeah.
And the engineers recommended that. Do this sooner than later?
Yeah.
Cause I'm, I'm with Jerry from the standpoint, well, the traffic, it got, we don't see any crackage or anything like that. Are, are we hurting ourselves to, to pursue an inspection and seek out funding and stuff like that, and then go after just the permanent fix and do it one time? I'm not, I'm not a road engineer, but, you know, when they, when they talk to us, did, did they suggest that at all, or, or did they make it some? This here, I would, I would say addressing this sooner than later would definitely be advisable. Potential ways to address this issue would be to use a flowable fill.
And like the engineer told me when he, when I talked to him on the phone, it may fix it for two or three years, but if it keeps eroding, you're hard to address it. And eventually, we'll have to address no matter what.
Well, if he's cutting out areas, wouldn't we better just put concrete in there instead of a, a, a fill, something that's gonna be heavier and?
It's gonna be a lot more expensive.
Concrete versus flowable fill.
Especially if you're talking three semis, or three cement rucks.
I just wonder how long it's been like that.
Doesn't seem like there's that much room underneath there, does it? Yeah, but how many deaths would?
It's just about ten, as Dave said the other day when he was in.
But I guess I would like to see it fixed, even if it's a temporary fix, rather than seeing somebody hit it with their car, and then we're liable for a whole lot more if somebody gets hurt. I mean, cause we know it's there. And do you want your vehicle to be the one to go through it? I don't.
I agree. Shannon?
Since it's a road repair, can you do it the good way and add it to the assistance, except if this is part of the street project, even though it's?
It's not part of the street project, because it wasn't engineered or bid or anything.
But if they would tear it all up and fix it the right way, you'd have to get engineers involved and stuff.
Good question.
Just struggle with the doing it twice type thing, but I know if you're gonna do any adequate engineering as to what the final solution is, it's gonna take some time.
Well, I'm hoping that it's not that much, you're only gonna need one truck full, so maybe we'll be a little cheaper to do it.
Dave only found it when he was inspecting, looking over there.
Yeah, he was up looking at the box.
I mean, frankly, it, it, it could have been like that for two years. It's hard to say.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think that, I mean, I mean, if we're gonna do it right, to me, it's gonna be a pretty, pretty extensive job, you know, I mean. If you look, I guess, like north of that, I mean, I mean, I kind of also, I mean, over the years, that, and then, I mean, by dip is getting more and more.
More of a dip.
It is getting, you're right.
So, I mean, I'm gonna say there's gonna be major, all kinds of work on that side too, so, I mean, I think if we were just to, I guess, like patch it for now, and maybe hope it gets better, or, or, or not gets better, but I mean, I mean, I mean, it might last for, you know, I mean, like five more years, you know, maybe great or something, but.
Be nice to stretch it out before anybody gets hit from online.
All right, so. We want to do something, we need to take some action, follow action.
Would they have pride to do the work no more than, no more than a? More than a six thousand dollar?
A motion by Stern.
I'll second it.
Second by Pillar. Discussion? I think we've got plenty. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion, Carey.
Till Tim would really would like to see the two bills on versus six.
I just don't see us dumping three, three loads of trucks in there, but whatever, and both, both sides, who knows?
When you cut that hole in there, what you find, you might find your path to China.
Finance bussing?
Nothing at this time.
Police fire?
Yeah, from the fire department, end of the year, blowout sale on FLIR cameras. A FLIR camera is infrared scans, looking for hotspots, and we have an opportunity with our fire department to take a, a old piece of obsolete equipment, and get fifteen hundred dollars worth of value towards the purchase of a replacement, and so that those cameras with a charger costs just under seven thousand dollars. Uh, but then we get the trade in value on that, so right now, we've got seventy-two hundred dollars remaining in our budget out there, and we're looking, I'm making a motion that we extend six thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars towards the purchase of the FLIR camera, a vehicle charger for it, and then a, a couple of miscellaneous pieces of equipment that go on one of our trucks. Did you get all that?
I'll second.
Motion by Pillar, second by Wolf. Discussion? So that, that's overall cost, or are they asking for some help from the rural on that? More discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion, Carey. You know, Stan?
No.
Okay. And no FCD. We've got a couple of things. First, um, you've noticed, maybe you haven't, but there is a conveyor belt up the asphalt area, they're gonna start crushing it next week. So they're, they've got that and a big payload around this, like start moving our product around, so. Good to see that getting taken care of. And secondly, um, if you've driven around town and you're looking at houses, you're gonna see some yellow auction signs around the community. There's the properties that are up here on, on the wall right now, um, there are, these are properties that have been rentals in our community, and, that green and tan one is right directly north of my house on Fifth Street. But I think we, I, I would really like to take a good, hard look at possibly improving our community and cleaning some areas up in our community by us possibly purchasing these, or some of these. And get them demoed. For instance, that white one right there, that one is right next to one that's up further, demo those two, you have a nice, you now have a nice lot in a neighborhood that can have a home put out eventually someday, might not be in the next one, two, or three years, but, I, I want to be as graceful as possible by saying that some of these properties have had people in them that don't respect our community very much, and have left things in shambles, and Dan, please be kind when you write this game. I don't want to say that these are total, well, I think we could really clean some things up, and I think we have an opportunity to do something at a pretty good price. I do know that there are some of these that are being negotiated on now by private people. And what does not get purchased privately will be going up for auction. I would hate to see them continue as the same type of properties they are now.
Is, are they gonna have a base, uh, base bid on them?
They're not gonna have reserve either, what they go, they're gonna fix out what they sell for.
Because my, my thing is, cause there's one over by me too, and, and I'm, you know, it's, it should be torn down, but, you know, what if the neighbor decides he wants to buy it, and is hoping to get it for cheap and tear it down and expand his yard, are we gonna kind of watch to make sure that you're, if we do this, that you're not, really get someone who's going to want to get it for the cheapest price and tear it down themselves? You know?
You know how that goes.
Yeah.
You know, what if your ne, what if the neighbor beside that neighbor wants it for a, a slum rental?
Yeah, but I mean, how much money are we willing to spend a?
You're right, I have no idea. Shannon, would you?
I've got two of them right now, one person, a neighbor already bought one, and she's gonna tear it down and rebuild her house later, and another one, they're gonna convert it into a garage. So they're already improving those two properties just by what they're doing. Those two twin homes over by Steve's over there, like Jerry said, that's a great idea, because the lots are small otherwise, and then, yeah, that's one over by you too, I mean, that's,
that one needs to be torn down.
That one right there, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the values that we have on them are ridiculous.
I think that one's being dealt, uh, dealt with right now too, but.
That top one?
The, that one right there, the tin, uh?
That one right there is the one that, I think they're in turn into a garage, that's what they're talking about.
The next one down is being dealt with, I think, too. I.
And then who the other people are that are gonna buy it?
What, what kind of taxable value are we looking at those right now? You got that on your list?
Those duplex ones, those are up to like seventy some thousand dollars. The other ones?
Taxable evaluation, which.
Taxable value, that's just the property, not the house. The smallest value is that one by you, that one's valued at twenty-one thousand. Uh, that yellow one there?
That was just, that was.
Right here.
That's at forty-six thousand right now, that's a taxable value on that one right now. That one's a basement flooded, there's a two thousand dollar lien against it, because they didn't pay, that was those people who went and flooded, and since they didn't own it, they didn't care, and they let it go on their specials, and now it's up with the house. So what buys that? There's liens on all of them, not a big one to that sort of shit. There's liens on all of them, not a big one to that sort of shit.
So, I guess, what kind of dollar value, I mean, I mean, I mean, not that you have to save, but I mean, I mean, if we're gonna purchase these, maybe then after that, then there's gonna be some kind of
Cost.
Cost to them to tear them down, and?
Yeah, and tearing them down would be obviously a job that our guys could, our guys could do, to tear it down. I did talk to Tim Schwartz about one that I, near me, and he said that if he did it, it's to tear out a concrete in the basement, tear it out, haul it to the landfill, backfill it all in between three and five thousand dollars.
Could we do controlled burns? Let the fire department play?
I, that's, it's not a bad idea.
They blow up buildings right in the middle of the cities and drop them straight down.
Exactly, yeah, true. Casey, I have no idea, I, and I, I know, all I, I know that some of the values on these, there's no way they're worth that. And the way our housing market is right now, with fifty houses for sale in Hazen, I think, I think he'd be willing to deal with selling them out right before an auction because they're probably?
The auction's gonna result in splendid nothing for him, I bet.
You never, you never know, but.
Yeah, even other guys that own houses in town that they rent out, they're not, I mean, they're trying to dump their properties too, so, they're not gonna want it.
So, do you wanna approach the owner and offer before the auction?
Possibly, if, if he's willing, since he's, since he's willing to sell some other properties, maybe he's willing to do that with, with some others too.
I think as a city, if we're gonna go on that adventure, we're better off pursuing it at the auction.
That's what I'm thinking.
Than, than dealing ahead of time. I would think.
That's what I'm thinking, 'cause that house by me, if it's valued at twenty, I wouldn't give it five for it. You know, an auction, you might get it for a thousand, because nobody's gonna want it, unless one of the neighbors?
People know what kind of houses they are.
Yeah.
I think the only reason anybody would want it would be to get it down and put something else there.
Right.
I, when I called Glass Auction Company, they're out of Hebrew, and they said that there will be final sales and there will be no reserve on the auction properties. So, and I think that's, Monty, was it December seventeenth?
Fourteenth.
December fourteenth.
Fourteenth of Friday.
You know, 'cause let's just say that we were to purchase these and, you know, tear them down, advertise them as a lot, you know, for like five thousand dollars, and maybe lose, maybe lose ten grand, you know, a lot or something, you know?
I'd be willing to lose some money, even about make them viable, and and to improve our neighborhoods if we could, but I, you're, it could be, it could be a money loser for, for us. But if they're used, they're?
It'll maybe be a longer-term gain.
I, I, yeah.
And if we tore them down, you know, look at how many, we have no lots available for sale anymore. Those lots may be worth a heck of a lot more in vacant.
Yeah.
Or somebody could have something new, somebody be able to sell them for a higher price.
My fear of going to an auction and being, we're in the city of Hazen, had an auction, is that someone's gonna try to drive you up and drive up the price. And then they're gonna see somewhere in the deeper pocket that really wants them, and then where do you decide, where do you, where do you stop? Kind of like going to try to get that land that Steve Hansen has now, North Side Town Hall. Where do you, where do you stop? It's, I guess we just say, there's no way we pay more than X amount, and then at least we tried to do something, but.
I mean, that's what I would do, go to the auction and have a, a, a number in your mind, and, and but I couldn't see going ahead of time because they're not gonna accept a, a low-ball offer, you know what I mean? Whereas an auction?
I think once it's advertised and the bills are out, they're not allowed to sell.
Yeah.
For, for the auction.
And I, yeah.
The fact of the matter is, if you don't get it, you're not off, you're not out any worse than what you were before the auction sale happened. So, I think if we just set a cap or something for each of the properties.
And I think if you look at the landlords that we have in our community right now, they're more into the improvement part of, of their properties, they don't, they're not into these older homes that are falling apart and trying to rent them. I mean, there, I've seen a lot of improvement in a lot of the rentals, so.
And so, if they're not gonna sell, let's say that, let's say that no one, nobody like wants these. So, is that order then just gonna stay a heck with it, just gonna go back on?
It's pretty behind on his taxes.
Back on taxes, so?
He keeps it just barely paid.
Okay.
So then you have another opportunity to get them, if they went back for taxes.
Pat, is there any, if we did go to the auction, is there anything that we'd have to? Do we have any limits that we'd have to deal with, or?
Same ones you did for the base of property.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you have the power to acquire properties. In particular, for redo, or refurbishment, improvements, that type of shit. In fact, there used to be a community block ground money available for that specific purpose, acquiring properties like this.
So, do we need to move on this, or are you just gonna?
I'm just gonna look at my calendar through the fourteenth.
I am not gonna be around the fourteenth. You're neither.
I, I am around the fourteenth, and I wouldn't wanna do it by myself. I'd wanna have someone else, if you're around Casey or anybody else, we can't have three people there, correct?
Call a special meeting.
At the auction?
I think so. If you could get two of us.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, I'm not gonna be?
Yeah, you wanna vacation again?
No, we have a Christmas party that day.
Oh, West River.
I have a daughter graduating from college.
Okay, you might wanna be there for that, Dan?
Probably.
Are you around Casey at all, or?
I was planning on going to this.
Oh, yeah?
But, but these are the only ones that are now, you know, I'm not interested anymore, so, so I can be around.
So, I think, so what I'm hearing is that we're all kind of on the same page, that'd probably be a good thing for our community to tend this and hopefully clean things up a little bit. It'd be a, probably a long project for our guys, but, you know, it's not like we have a timeline to get things turned, turned out, cleaned up. I think if Shannon can get some numbers together, what the values are?
I'm thinking about the land value.
Right, the land value?
That's really the only thing that you guys have going for you. Yeah, with those gone, you could sell those lots, someone would want to put a garage on there, all kinds of stuff, and then you have something with real value there, and that stuff.
Like this property here at the bottom of the screen, our guys have mowed that four times last summer, you know, the city has, you know? They don't keep them, they don't care, you know?
Well, at the minimum, you may wanna come up with a formula for the limitation, like land value up to a thousand dollars higher or whatever. You know, something, so you do set some limits as to?
Yeah, yeah.
What, what you're allowed to do.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Whatever, I think any number of hours.
Yeah.
Because you know that you're gonna have those additional expenses of unpaid taxes and specials that you'll have to absorb.
Tearing it out.
Public's gonna be paying those, so.
The city buys it, does the city get it, pay down taxes? They don't pay property taxes, they won't pay the specials. Special, the way they're dealing with it.
So, if you wanna do this, it's, you probably need a motion to set a, set a, a number that property value plus ten percent, or something thereabouts.
Or else a dollar value at the whole sale. I'm just curious where at, what kind of funds we got for something like this, or how much, or?
Where, where would they, where would this money come from?
Realistically, we could define using some of the sales tax. Because in the law, it will be a benefit to the city and will reduce property taxes for, for anybody else. I mean, in short term, it's not gonna be a benefit to anybody, but the law now, that we do have very limited funds set aside for purchasing the property. Just in general fund, I wanna say it's four million, five million dollars in there, so we, no matter what your problem is, using your sales tax.
So, right now, how many properties are gonna be for sale? Because you said two of them.
Well, there's six of them in Hazen, three of them are exactly the one.
Yeah, but like I said, I don't think he can sell those two now that they're on the, the bill.
Oh.
So, I think he's still gonna have to go through, that's, that's why I was interested in. And I, I can't remember how much the land is, I think seven something maybe, I'm just, I didn't look at that.
So, we're down, gonna slowly, Monty, so that one's, that one's in town, that one's in Hazen. The next one, that's two, that one I think someone else is dealing with.
That one's over there.
Yellow one would be three.
That's over by Tom Berry.
Which one's by Tom Berry?
Oh, that white one, that's, that's one by Nancy.
The one by you, okay, yeah, yeah.
It's a Christmas house.
And then the last one, those, yeah, it's two blocks.
Okay.
So, in reality, those two duplexes are in the rest of the zone, so someone's gonna buy those lots and build a brand-new house. And maybe a part of them.
Are people living in any of them at this point? Or are they all vacant?
That one's someone living in, the one over by Tom Berry.
Not in this one.
That, yellow one's empty.
That one's empty.
That one's empty.
No one's in there. There might be someone living in one of those duplexes, I thought it's the lays on there.
The one with parcel two, but, oh, that one's empty, but the next one, I think.
Oh, and then there's, oh, that one's not all there, that one.
Which one?
Yeah, another one.
Monty, go down again.
Okay.
This one here?
That's empty.
I don't, I, is there nobody living?
No.
No.
There's anybody there for money here now.
Is that right on Fifth?
Yeah, right beside me.
Oh, okay.
Right, north, north of the street to that one.
Okay.
Bears on one side, with, with solar. I think this auction's here at City Hall. Is there a time on there somewhere?
One o'clock, it says, it says one o'clock.
I'm willing to spend no more than sixty thousand dollars.
Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion.
And you're talking sixty for whatever, all across the board?
Yeah. I hate to even put that in the paper.
Yeah.
You know, there it says, owner reserves the right to reject any and all bids.
Now, that's not what, when I called the auction company at base, it would be better. So, if we have, if they read the paper that we're willing to spend sixty thousand dollars, is that, are we stummie our toe?
For, for citywide beautification. Dan will put a good twist on it. He knows what the intention is.
Yeah, I know what Dan does, but it's, but.
But Dan, Dan knows how to write that up, so we're, we're, it doesn't sound?
I'm not, I'm not worried about Dan, I'm worried about someone else.
I don't think you're gonna get people bidding against you just to raise you, because then they might get stuck with it, and then they gotta come up with the money. I mean, you have to come up with the money that day, basically. Or ten percent down, I think it says, non-refundable? That's usually what it is.
Nope.
No?
Hundred percent non-refundable.
Bank check and letter of credit form.
We have a motion and a second, and we're discussion. And we're discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Bullwinor.
Aye, motion carried.
We can't sell nice houses, isn't it?
We have a date. Ten A, CWSRF questionnaire.
This is kinda like the ones that get revolved, this call for the drinking water revolving fund, this is for the clean water revolving fund. Just puts us on the list that there is a potential for a project. And this goes back to the sewer capacity study that was done way back in two thousand twelve by Old Day, relating to replacement of some sewer lines that are in need of it in different areas of towns. Total cost of the project is estimated at one point zero seven four million. And again, this is just to get us on the list so funding is available. Doesn't mean we have, yeah, kinda like the law.
So, if the parade on legislation passed, and we would be receiving eight hundred thousand dollars over the next two, over the next biennium, and then for the, the same amount about the bienniums after that, could we use that money in conjunction with this, you think?
This is just a loan, so.
Right, so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just get on the list for cheap money.
Absolutely. So, we don't need to take any action?
Yeah, we need a motion so I can sign it and send it in. So, moves.
Yeah, motion by Keller.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Bullwinor.
Aye, motion carried. I've made water rates discussion. Casey, you wanna lead that, or Monty, or?
Yeah, I gave you some information, I'm still waiting to hear back from Midwest Assistance Program. You know, we had originally talked about raising the base rate and then just indexing our rate like a dollar fifty higher than what we're charged. And waiting to hear back from Midwest Assistance, if that's a good number, too high, too low, to make sure that we're always complying with those revolving loan funds, so. Again, I put it on there just for a little discussion, I was hoping to have a response today, but unfortunately, I don't.
So, would, do you think we'd be safe that if we had an automatic calculator, every time they raise theirs, we stay at least seventy-five cents to a dollar above that?
That's, that's what I'm looking for from Midwest Assistance, 'cause they have all the different information as to, when they look at the trends and projections, they can tell you this is gonna work for you for a longer period than if you just set a rate high and wait for it to catch up again like we did in the past. If you like, I'll just put it on the next agenda, hopefully have some more information for you, obviously, we're gonna have to act on it next meeting, one way or the other, whether we have the information or not. At least we'll get some information out in the paper on the ten as well, so. People are aware of what's going on.
Thank you. All right, twelve A, Housing Authority Board Appointment, looks like Christie, Fleeger, Keller. All right, twelve A, Housing Authority Board of Appointment looks like Christie, Leeger, Keller. Appointed to fill.
She was appointed to fill an unexpired term just last, uh, last spring, I think it was, or late last fall. And she is willing to serve another five-year term on the Housing Authority Board. Bless you. That's a fun board. She's a great person, I, I strongly endorse her. So she needs to.
Absolutely.
Motion by Keller to endorse.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
I hope she, when she reads that, she doesn't.
Substance abuse policy update.
Uh, I got the information from the new contract for the consortium to do our random drug testing. There was a rule in the US Supreme Court that only safety sensitive or. Commercial driver's license people can be in your pool, you can't test everybody. It's against the Fourth Amendment right to search and seizure. So we will have to amend our. Drug policy, whether we go with the consortium or not, it doesn't matter, because the ruling from the Supreme Court. Doesn't give a lot of leeway.
Is that just for city organizations, or is that for?
My understanding is that is for all companies, is my understanding of that. So I have some proposed changes to our policy, basically it'll justify most safety sensitive. We'll take out some of the wording for just the transit system, because our CDL drivers and public works, Scottish truck drivers. Those play, like, where there is imminent danger while they're operating equipment would be in a safety sensitive position.
So are you also going to update then? Position descriptions within the city of Hazen to have that statement in there that says.
Those under our policy.
Yes, or isn't?
That's the next step, I visited with Pat a little bit, that will be the next step, is updating our employee policy. To also include those safety sensitive positions and make it part of the job description itself. I guess the only, the only nice thing is when we're paying sixty dollars per person to get in and out of school, but sure less people in there.
And that's, that's just for, for random, just once a person's on, and we would, does the law still allow then? If any potential city employee before they're hired?
My understanding is we can still do pre-employed.
It's just the random.
It's just the random. We can still do pre-employment reasonable suspicion. From my discussions with the lead of city's attorney, we're still, we can still contract with global safety to do pre-employment reasonable suspicion, all those other. Tests, along as our supervisors have the training. Which is available through local safety.
So then on the list, it says, I guess, like licenses, like by itself, or no?
No, it, that goes back to the driver's license, commercial or used Department of Transportation licenses, like the bus drivers.
Okay.
Do a taste.
Okay.
This was part of the list that.
For this.
Uh, I will need you to approve if we're going to change the drug and alcohol policy, I have a legal motion to go ahead and approve the amendment of the policy. And then to enter into the agreement with global safety through the lead of cities for the test.
Sounds like it's a legal thing. It's individual rights.
So move.
Take a motion, all right. Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Bullman over.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, let's fix down approval of bills.
A few more on your desk. Those all new Christmas lights on the show? There.
There were a couple baby bulbs for Christmas lights, so this is basically. Then maybe we did the star on the.
Oh, yeah. Shines right in on the bathroom, remember? It's nice.
It's a free night.
I'm glad it's there, cause I learned several years that it didn't exist up there, so it does look nice.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Bullman over.
Aye. Motion carried, meeting adjourned.